Hey, good afternoon. How you all doing? It's after five o'clock. Uh, we are going to go here and start, uh, our council meeting. Councilwoman Harris, will you give us our prayer? Councilman Crone, father, will I play it?
Oh, gracious, eternal God, we're coming for you this afternoon. Just want to thank you, Lord, for another day. Lord, you've been so good and you've been so kind. We give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor and we give you praise because it all belong to you. So, Lord, I ask you to saturate yourself in this place. Anoint each and every one of us, oh God. Let us be able to make the right decisions, oh God. And we thank you for our mayor. As you continue to give him the vision that is due. Thank you for our financial department, oh God. Thank you for our police and fire department, oh God. We thank you for Phillip, the one that makes the decision. Is try to bring in new business in this city, oh God. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor and we give you praise. Because it's in your name, oh God, that we live and move and have our being. So, Lord, we just want to thank you, Lord, for keeping us safe, oh God. Continue, Lord, bless West Memphis. Continue, let your blood flow through West Memphis. Continue to save and deliver and set free in West Memphis, oh God. And for this, I thank you, oh God, for being the God that you are. Lord, and look at the ones that sick and got COVID, oh God. I ask you to bring your healing into them, oh God. Look at every family that it is. Look on the Chitma family, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now, God. Glory to your name, Jesus. Lord, you've been so good and you've been so kind. We lift you up right now, oh God. We bless your holy name, oh God. Lord, you continue to wrap your loving arms around us. Continue to cover the city with your blood. Continue, Lord, let your spirit, Lord, fill this place, oh God. We thank you right now, God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Let's face the flag for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor McClinton.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson, here. City Treasurer Suter, here. Councilmember Bruce. Councilmember Bruce. Councilmember Cat.
Here.
Councilmember Crone.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchinson. Councilmember Hutchinson. Councilmember Muhammad.
Present.
Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Wheeler.
Here.
Eight out of ten present.
We have eight out of ten present. And then we hear from Dr. Bruce. Uh, he's at the hospital right now. We haven't heard yet from Councilwoman Hutchinson. So, we have eight out of ten. So, we have a quorum. We had no bid openings. Uh, do we have any corrections, additional corrections to the minutes?
Motion approved or submitted.
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We had no old business. Uh, can I get a motion in second as I add some city attorney business to the agenda?
So moved.
Check.
All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? It's added. Uh, Mr. Attorney, turn the new business over to you.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, we have a, I have a situation where I'm going to need some action from the city council on a lawsuit that, uh, that I don't really want to mention names because I don't really want to go into executive session to discuss any of it. But, uh, it's a lawsuit against the police department and, uh, one, and the chief. It's always against the chief when this police department sued. But also against one particular officer. Uh, the municipal league is handling the case. And the good news is they have provider, or they are providing coverage, which is going to be ninety percent, ten percent, which means the municipal league would pay ninety percent of any judgment or settlement, and the city would pay ten percent. So, uh, in settlement discussions, the municipal league lawyer and the lawyer for the plaintiff, lawyer for the plaintiff has made a demand of sixty thousand dollars, which the municipal league lawyer wants the city council or recommends to the city council to reject that demand and to make a counter offer of five thousand dollars. We don't have any, uh, medical information at this time. It's supposed to be potentially provided to us in the future. And we may come back later, depending upon what information we have, to make a different request. But that is the recommendation of the municipal league attorney. Uh, they would be paying ninety percent of that amount, assuming it was accepted. I expect it will not be accepted. And I expect that litigation will continue and that we'll be coming back at a later time, maybe, if there's a reasonable demand request. So, that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for the council to approve or reject the recommendation of the municipal league lawyer based upon what I just said.
Councilman Cat.
Yeah, Mayor, make a motion. We accept the municipal league's recommendation in this issue.
Second.
Motion in second. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes, Attorney.
Thank you.
All right. We had no permission requests. Uh, committee reports? Police?
Mayor, council, police report is kind of lengthy. But then you have copies of it. And if you have any question, I will try to answer those for you. Uh, also have utility commission. This is a little short, I'll read it. The West Memphis Utility Commission met January the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, at eight thirty at the Utility Commission Department. The first item on the agenda was approved, approval of the December minutes. They were approved as written. Second item on the agenda was December safety report. Safety Director Brent Sims reported that there were seventy days since the last recordable incident. Eight hundred and thirteen days since lost hind injury and fire recordable injuries for all of twenty twenty-one. The third item on the agenda was personnel update. There were no new hires, no resignations for the month of December. The Utility Commission has thirteen positions out of seventy-nine budgeted, uh, open. The next item on the agenda was broadband feasibility draft study report. This was presented by Assistant General Manager Roy Wimbish. He gave an update on the West Memphis Residential Phone Survey course scenario. And the results were, he reported thirty-four percent of the people work from home and thirty percent that it was not enough broadband to work from home. It also, uh, resulted in seventy percent would change their broadband provider if we offered a competitive price, end of report.
Thank you, Councilman Mary. Uh, that was the utility and the police department. Did Far meet?
Oh. Mayor, can I ask one question about the, uh, police commission? Do we?
Yes.
Do we have a? A, have we hired the chief of the police department? And if so, when?
I will make announcement on the hiring of the chief this Monday.
Okay.
Yes. Were there any other questions? Uh, did Far commission meet?
Yes, sir. The Parks Commission met on January eleventh at five thirty P M. We did not have a quorum to do any kind of legal action. But we did have few things that, uh, the Parks Director Lorenzo Parker wanted to discuss with us. There were no financials to report. And currently, we are in the process of planting raw grass on both high school athletic fields and going over the maintenance checklist to ensure that the fields and facilities are in working operation by this spring. Backstop netting will also need repairing and replaced before the season starts. All city, all city playgrounds will need the impact surfacing replays to meet the APA standard to comply. The Parks Department is looking to purchase the Pacific Mulch in bulk to save money instead of contracting it out. City Clerk James Pulliam, who was present at the meeting, has some suggestions on where the materials could be purchased. Signed architect contracts have been forwarded to the architect by City Deputy Clerk Patricia Lane. And the Parks Director will coordinate a working meeting with everyone involved to move the park bond issue forward in the upcoming weeks. And that's the Tilden Rogers Park and the High Tower Park that we are working on. Trout fishing program has begun. And the state's game fish and wildlife department has tagged a number of fish for a contest that will result in prizes for any person that catches one of the tagged fish. I don't remember whether he said, if you catch one of the tagged fish and you report it, if the prize will be a hundred dollars of what. But details will be posted on the city's website and the Arkansas Game and Fish website. The Quickenet County Boys and Girls Club will begin its spring soccer season at Tilden Rogers Park. The department will also assist the field preparation as well as maintenance and upkeep of the soccer equipment. City Clerk James Pulliam inquired about pooper scoopers for all the parks and signs about parking on the grass. And the director assured him that these items would be addressed. The director suggested with city council members in Ward three and four about organizing some community meetings to see what citizens would like to see developed in the open area in parks in those wards. Specifically Horton Parks in Ward four and Grimsey Lee's Park in Ward three. Councilperson Muhammad, that's me, says she would help with this issue. The director passed out forms to the commissioners asking them to prioritize items and issues concerning parks, equipment, programming, landscaping, and any miscellaneous issues in the park. The director asked Mrs. Muhammad to pass these along to council members to get feedbacks from them as well. And I do apologize, I left my notebook with that form in there. And I can go ahead and, and email it or, or text it to you all the way we typically do so you can look at it and give some feedback on what you would like to see done in parks in your area. Just prioritize a list of things that he has on that, uh, sheet of paper that he passed out to us. And that ends my, my report.
Okay. And a question for Councilwoman Muhammad? All right. Far?
Now, sir, the Fire Commission will meet after the meeting today. Your elected chairperson to coordinate events with your staff.
Okay. Public works?
No, uh, public works met, I believe, this past Tuesday, the first Tuesday of, of the month. And there has been a meeting, be one coming up.
Chairman. Thank you. Chairman of Commerce? Airport? Uh, is there any, uh, committees that I may have forgotten? I did want to bring up, uh, I have to, it was two boards that I didn't appoint. It's the D R C and the Insurance Board. I will bring those back to you all this next, uh, council meeting, which is going to be the first of February. Also, uh, within community development, we are doing neighborhood sweeps of turning down houses. And right now, they are on Dr. Martin the King, North Thirty-Fifth, all the way down to like Seventh Street on the north side. So, I know there's Ward five and Ward four, both of those wars. So, you all having the houses that you all need to make sure to get torn down, please get them to me as soon as possible. Or if it's someone within that area that's planning on working on the home, please let me know as soon as possible. Because actually, that next council meeting, that would be the thirty days from the first council meeting we had in January, that we're going to start turning down the, the houses down in Ward five, the trailer park area and the ones in Ward one within the Shady Grove area. But it's a thirty day wait that we have to wait. Once we, uh, once you all condemn them. So, actually, at the next meeting, I will have a list of houses for condemnation that's going to be on that Ward five and Ward four area.
What's that area again?
It's going to be North Thirty, North Thirty-Fifth Street, starting on the north side with Dr. Martin, Dr. Martin the King.
Right.
All the way down to North Seventh Street.
What about the south side? Are we the Seventh Street on the south side also?
No, just the, uh, north side right now. Because actually, uh, the first meeting the next month, we will start turning down the trailers on the, uh, in the Grove area as well as on, uh, North Nineteenth Street as well as the ones in Ward one and Shady Grove. And then.
What, you know, Ward five takes up that, um, Walker going back.
Yeah, I mean, actually, we've been riding over there. And I haven't really seen a lot of houses from Walker on back toward the Eastwood yet. Uh, we haven't seen none that's in condemnable stages. But you know, the one, the trailer park in the Oak and Grove and all that is going to be torn down the first week of February and go up there. All right. Okay, I just got the airport report. Uh, I guess I would give it, um, highlights from this morning meeting, uh, commission meeting via Zoom. The, uh, airport, they've drawn stripping rehab grant was approved yesterday at the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics meeting. This is a ninety-ten grant. The contractor is, is waiting on materials in order to get started on the beacon replacement project. He is hoping to get started on the groundwork in March. Do anyone know how much the grant is that's ninety-ten? All right, well, we'll get more information on that because I'm just reading what's on the paper. So, I'm not sure what the amount of the grant and what would be our ten percent responsibility. So, let you all know that.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, have you already identified homes in Ward four that need to be?
Uh, Paul Luca office, yeah, they had, they have identified several homes. Uh, and I'd like for you all, Mr. Harris, uh, Mr. Murray, Mr. Muhammad, Mr. Monday, you all to go by there if it's tomorrow and look at the list and see where they at. And if it's a house that they may have overlooked, that you all may know, you can get it added. Because actually, we're going to be turning these down within the city. So, uh, because you all can let them know and look at the list.
Mayor, have we, uh, have we determined the cost for these demos yet?
Well, sure. When I'm going there with this, uh, it's the, uh, the level of, um, trash that we have to throw away as well as the, any, uh, taxes that may be owed on the end demand power that we have to spend on it. So, basically, it's going to stay within that range.
Mayor, are we too late to get a house on the clean, you know, cleaned up and a lot cleaned off? Are we, are we too late to get one?
No, you, you not too late. Actually, what we are doing, we, we going to sweep through the whole city.
Right.
But you know, honestly, there most of the houses in Ward one and Ward three, in Ward two, didn't need as much work as Ward five and Ward four needed. So, definitely, if you got a house, just, just put it down.
Yeah, we got one, it's the one over on Oliver, Nix.
It's already, we've already discussed that with Paul.
So, is he going to tear it down or?
It's going back on the demo list, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was it. That was it. Thank you.
But actually, also on that demo list, we, we still doing the community development, uh, turn downs too. So, that's the one on like Eleven Street. I hate to call this name, but you know, Eleven Street in Jackson. It's several of those houses is already within that community development, development block grant money that's going down as well. These are homes that with the new demolition department that we started, they'll be turned down as well. Yes, ma'am.
Of course, I, I'm so very, very proud of the fact that we are going to be demolishing all of those, um, homes that are most certainly a, a danger and a bad look to our city. But do we have plans to try and rebuild? Or do you have any developers who are thinking about trying to come into those areas to, um, rebuild in the future?
Well, the answer to the question, no, not at this time. But we still reaching out to developers and hoping that, uh, single individuals that may be able to build in certain areas that they can take it.
So, when we tear those houses down, this is just a question I like to ask. When we tear the houses down, does that property belong to the city then? And if so, how, if someone want to purchase that property, how would they go about doing it?
No, actually, that property belongs to the, uh, to the landlord, the one who owns it now, the property owner. And if it goes to community development block grant money, where they don't have to pay for. But if we tear it down, that lien would be placed on the property. So, before they can sell it, that lien would have to be taken care of.
Mr. Mayor?
That's correct. Uh, and there are some houses that every once in a while, somebody wants to donate one or things like that. But typically, what we do, or at least what I do in my office, the, uh, Paul Lukers office sends me sometimes some title work that we look at to see what the status of the title is and, you know, who we need to contact to see if we can get permission a lot of times. So, sometimes that's the biggest obstacle is there's, the title's not in good shape to try to get things done, so.
City Treasurer?
On the airport commission meeting, the grants were for fifty-five thousand for restriping the airport.
Okay.
And for the beacon, it's a combined design phase for the North Apron Rehab, which was approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay. You all heard the numbers on the first one. This is fifty-five thousand, which we'll pay ten percent of that and the rest will go to, uh, will be paid by the grant. And the second one's a three hundred thousand dollar complete?
Three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else? In other committees? All right, we're going to move down to appointments. We have a reappointment to the A and P Commission, Ms. Shauna Reinhardt. Uh, this was submitted by, uh, Jim Jackson. Uh, we got a motion in second.
So moved. Second.
Was there any discussion? Hearing none, all pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, she's reappointed?
Her term will expire twenty twenty-five?
Jim? Twenty twenty-five, that's it, correct? Okay, thank you. Uh, I have some presentations to give out to some, uh, young ladies who have been doing a great job within our community. Has definitely been supporting our city. Um, they've been working extremely hard for a long time, even before I came here. And I, it has been an honor to be able to work with these young ladies, uh, from these different organizations. All three of their founders, they, I think, fall within five or six days of, of each other. And I just want to show them my, my appreciation by honoring them. I'm going to start with, uh, a group that says, "As Mayor, on behalf of the City of West Memphis, I'm honored to recognize the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. On a hundred and two years of stellar service, the Zeta Phi Beta Incorporated was founded on January sixteenth, nineteen twenty, in Washington, DC, on the campus of How and guided by their core values of scholarship service, sister love, and final womanhood." The Zeta, the Zeta Phi Beta Incorporated is an organization that has made significant contribution to the vitality of our city. And the local Zeta chapter truly represents West Memphis values at their best. At this time, as we honor, congratulations on one hundred and two years of steadfast commitment to empower and uplifting women to service of our cities, the Zeta Phi Betas. Will you come forward, please?
On behalf of Delta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, we're just honored to serve our community and be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Second, we have an organization, once again, as Mayor of the City of West Memphis, I'm honored to recognize the women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated for a hundred and nine years of public service. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded on January thirteenth, nineteen thirteen by twenty-two collegiate women at Howard University to promote academic excellence and provide assistance to those in need. Now, with over a one thousand charter chapters of college-educated women who are committed to public service with their focus on sustaining the growth and development of the African-American community. The City of West Memphis would like to thank the West Memphis Area Alumni Chapter for their hard work and dedication they render to our city. Congratulations on one hundred and nine years of sisterhood, scholarship service, and social action to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and the City of West Memphis. On the behalf of the West Memphis Area Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, we just thank you for your continued support. And actually, today, we're asking you all to keep our organization in your prayers. Um, our beloved President passed away this morning due to an illness. So, Deltas are hurting national, nationwide. So, we're just asking you to continue to keep us in your prayers.
Amen. And last but not least, I have the opportunity to, uh, bring to the floor, as Mayor, on behalf of the City of West Memphis, I'm honored to recognize the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated on their sorority's hundred and fourteenth anniversary. For more than a hundred years, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority has been a pillar for excellence and social advocacy while empowering African-American women to pursue and thrive in higher education. Their commitment to enhancing the social, economic, and educational well-being of these members and others is focused and committed, commitment that we should all inspire to achieve. Now, one hundred and fourteen years later and with over three hundred thousand members, they are still providing outstanding service to our commitment. Congratulations on a hundred and fourteen years of exemplifying excellence through sustainable service to the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, better known as the AKAs. Will you come forward, please?
Thank you from Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, I can't make a chapter to the mayor, the city council, and the entire West Memphis community. We just want to thank you all for all the support that you all give us on our program services. And if there is anything else that you can think of that we can do, please feel free to contact us. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Y'all keep this one in your prayers. She's getting real sick. She's pretending right now. But y'all keep in your prayers, okay?
Thank you. Matter of fact, I'd like to add, all three of these organizations are doing outstanding job for the City of West Memphis. And I love working with them. job for the City of West Memphis, and I love working with them, and I think that we continue doing great things for in the city, so I'd like to, if we give them all a round of applause at this time. I have one announcement. The Honorable Mayor Chipman, Leo Chipman Funeral will be this Saturday at ten a.m. at our civic auditorium. They're asking if the Council could join me there, that would be great. City Clerk, City Treasurer, if you all would be a part of honoring, uh, Mayor, Mayor Chipman. We had some of these, this one of the surprises that will be given to the family, to make sure that on the street that he was, that he was, where he lived for years, Sam, we will make sure that we are honoring that area, so definitely, he's one I praise, Mayor. And since I've been mayor, I have had the honor to, to work with, uh, Mayor Johnson and Mayor Chipman, as well as Mayor Ferguson, Ferguson and, uh, Mayor Ingram. So you know, once we have left right now, it's Mayor Ingram and Mayor Ferguson, so definitely keep his family in your prayers, and, uh, definitely discern if you all in our bids at ten a.m., come to the civic auditorium, as we honor him, give him a great send-off. Citizen requests, we had a Roger Brown, which he came Tuesday night, so he's asking could he be re, re-put back on the agenda for the first Thursday in February. Actually, I talked with, uh, Mr. Clay, we got all that resolved as well. So right now, um, do we have anything, anyone want to add something?
Mayor, the only thing I asked is for the fire commission members to stay after the meeting.
Okay. So we asked for the fire commission members to stay after the meeting. Was there anything else I'm forgetting? Feels like I'm forgetting something. Mr. Ho, did you? No, I know what you, I know what you want. I, I got you, I got you.
I just want to thank God and crew for what they did.
We haven't.
Very fast, and did a real good job. Electricity's on at a short time, thank you.
We haven't received our November data yet for our numbers.
Okay.
But thanks to Mr. Cat, Mr. Pulliam, we're coming up with a sixteen-page new little format, it's condensed version of what our monthly reports are going to be, and they'll be in the packets for next one.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing none, uh, can I get a motion?
Is that okay?
Hold, hold. Councilman Monday? City Treasurer?
Needing is a list of all the members on the different commi, commission dates and times they were meeting, so we need, actually have this, so we can put it in the clerk's office and get it on our website as well. But you can just give, you can just give it to Mrs. Mitrice, you can just give it to her.
Councilman Cruz?
No, sir.
Well, can I get the most important motion?
Make a motion that we can go home.
All right, get it to me now.
It's hamburger time.
You made the motion?
I make a motion, go home.
Ms. Murr made it in second. All pay by?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's go.